It is six o'clock. We're gonna bring Garden City November 21st City Council Meeting to order. We're gonna stand for the invocation, our leading invocation, and remain standing for the pledge. Heavenly Father, we come this afternoon in the most humilitous manner that we know how. Father God, thanking you for all things, thanking you for last night, lying down this morning, and you so gracefully allowed us to rise and brought us out here this afternoon to take care of the business of the city, Father God. We pray that we can all be on one accord, agree to disagree about all things, and we just ask you to watch over our city as we make decisions about this city. Peace, blessings, all blessings. We ask in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll call, please.
Natalie Morris.
Present.
Kim Tice.
Here.
Richard Lassiter.
Present.
Marcia.
Here.
Gwen Hall.
Present.
Daddy Ruiz.
Here.
Everyone's present.
You're calling mayor. Now, we're gonna have a presentation, retired educators proclamation of the city manager. Anthony Rockton.
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone here from the retired educators?
Listen, can I? Seeing none of the proclamation, we'll stay in as we proceed. Please, this is.
Thanks to my trusty IT staff, I will be taking my position at the podium so that you're able to hear me. Okay? Okay, we have a number of public hearings next.
Now, we're gonna open up the floor for the public comments for three minutes.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone wanna come up and speak for three minutes? State your name and your address, please.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Mona Lisa Monroe. And, oh, I'm sorry, my address. 100 Town Center Drive, Garden City. I'm here to, again, let you guys know that we are having a fundraiser, which is a gala, the Garden City Housing Team. The funds, the proceeds from this particular fundraiser goes to roofs and ramps for residents in 2023. We are appealing to all business owners, residents, council members, all who can please donate or sponsor this particular gala because it is very, very crucial for our residents, especially when the weather is the way it is. They need their roofs and their ramps fixed. Now, if you don't know, we received $400,000 from DCA to repair and renovate homes. Now, that particular grant is strictly for that. So, we have to continue to raise funds to do the rest of the work for the residents in Garden City. And right now, the project on the table is roofs and ramps. So, in order to repair 15 roofs and ramps, we need about $25,000. So, we're trying very hard, and this is one of the first fundraisers before we leave the year in order for everyone to participate in the way that we know how. 2023, we have a lot of projects on the table, which you will know, and we're looking forward to the partnerships from you guys for the Garden City Housing Team. I'm open to any questions or any comments or any concerns that you may have for me tonight.
What's the date of the fundraiser?
The fundraiser is December the 15th, and it starts at six o'clock, and it is at the venue. The venue is...
Right next door.
Right next door, yes. And I did send emails out for the invitations, and if you need another one, I can also send that out as well.
Just as a quick point of clarification, the grant funds that you have received, you've already dedicated to the six homes.
That is correct.
The $25,000 is a separate project outside of those grant funds?
Yes, that is correct. The $400,000 is strictly for the six homes that qualify for the rehab and renovation. So, besides that, we still need to continue to assist the residents, and the only way we can do that is, of course, donations and generous people who can help if they have construction companies, painting companies, all the above like that. And please contact me at support, www.supportgch.org. And my name is Mona Lisa Monroe, phone number 913-373-5964.
912?
I'm sorry?
You said 912 or 913?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Area code? 912. What did I say, 213?
913.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry. 912-373-5964. I'm sorry. Any other questions?
Can I read the website again?
And we also have Facebook page and Twitter and that good stuff. All right? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna come up for three minutes? Who keeping the time? Mr. Clark, but we can't see.
Hello, good evening, council members.
Yes, state your name and your address, please.
Okay, my name is Lori Lakin, and I live at 103 Live Oak Lane in Garden City. And I am addressing, I'm also a member of the HOA and the Oaks subdivision and a resident there, and we are having an issue with people speeding in the subdivision. We have also four-wheelers coming through there, and we would love to maybe have some speed bumps put in to just slow people down. We are, the residents, the Oaks have actually doubled in size. We've added new homes, so there's lots more children at play, people walking around the neighborhood, and there are just several cars that are coming in and out of there at a very high speed, and it's just kind of been a nuisance. And this has been ongoing now for the last couple of years. And now that we've actually increased in size, more cars, more traffic coming in and out of the subdivision, and it can be kind of scary at times. You just don't realize, you know, you're coming around, and I don't even know exactly if there's a speed limit in our subdivision or even if a sign could even be put in just to make people more aware of the children and with the residents, so.
What was your address again?
103 Live Oak Lane.
Say the line again.
Live Oak.
Yes, I mentioned it to the city manager because Mr. Wade in the back, he mentioned it to me also about that.
Yes, and he and I, we are some of the original residents, and we've lived there, and it's a beautiful community, absolutely love it. And now, which is the increase of having more homes there, and yeah, it's definitely becoming a big concern of people really trying to slow down. I think that the speed bumps would be a huge asset in just helping out the situation.
And the Oaks subdivision is currently on the list for install. We've had a few of you request the same thing, and so...
Wonderful.
That will be done this year.
Great, great, that's wonderful news. Thank you all so much.
There's not a speed limit sign?
No, no, there isn't any signs, but...
Can we get a speed limit sign?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Have a great evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak for three minutes?
Good evening, everyone, City Council and Mayor Bruce Campbell and everyone associated with the city. Okay, my address is 111 Live Oak Lane, Garden City. Okay, I've lived out there for about 15 years, and just to reiterate what Ms. Laurie said, the neighborhood has grown in size, and we've been noticing people now speeding through the neighborhood.
What's your name, sir?
Wayne Avalon Joiner.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. And I've had conversations probably about six, seven, eight months ago with Mr. Mayor Bruce Campbell, trying to figure out, you know, how to get this done, and he, you know, gave me some advice, and that's why I'm here tonight. So, I'm just praying and hoping that the city of Garden City will be proactive and not reactive, if we can. Thank you.
How many do you think you need?
Let me see, there are some stop signs. I would say maybe one coming in, one going out. That's two, three, four, five, down the other side. Maybe 12 at the most, I think. Okay.
We're gonna start out with a lower number than that, and we can always reassess, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're gonna start out with three or four.
Okay.
And then...
And just one question, if anybody can answer this for me. What is the speed limit in a residential district in Garden City?
Well, likely, if you ask people that are speeding, it's 80 miles an hour, but it's normally 25.
25?
Yeah, but I think even that's too fast for your neighborhood, so I'll have to give a piece of carbon on that.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have time for one more. But we're gonna close that here. Now, we have a public hearing. We have one, two, three public hearing. First is PC 2237 subdivision request. Could you read it by heading on it?
Receive a public comment on request by Clay Price for subdivision of Zero Constantine Road with proposed development of townhomes.
Okay, have anyone wanna speak on that? Anyone wanna speak against? We're gonna close that here.
Were you wanting to come up for it, for or against? For, okay.
I think you should, now that you're up here, so.
And speaking for?
Yes, sir.
State your name, please, sir.
I'm Alec Metzger with EMC Engineering. So, I'll tell you a little bit about it. I don't know if you have a layout of it in your packet or not. So, it's right here behind City Hall. It's 17 acres on Constantine Road. There's an upland portion of it, about eight acres that'll be developed or proposed to be developed with 76 townhomes. It'll be... The townhomes will be two-story, about 1,400, I mean, 1,400 square feet heated. The open space will be provided of 10, 10 and 1/2 percent, green space of 27 percent. The homeowners association will maintain the open areas landscaping and pressure washing for the units. It'll be a rear-load garage, so the fronts of the buildings will face Constantine Road, and the rear of the buildings will be a road, private road that'll access the garage, and two parking spaces, so three spaces per unit will be provided. The road inside the subdivision will be a private, private road, and it'll be served by city water and sewer. Some improvements will be made to Constantine Road. There's already a 15-foot dedicated on each side of the road to make that a 60-foot right-of-way. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak for? Anyone wanna speak against it? We'll close this here. We have occupational tax ordinance amendment. Council, could you read it by heading on it, please?
Receive a public comment on proposed amendment to the occupation tax ordinance, which deletes a provision from the current version of the ordinance providing that no business shall pay occupational tax in excess of $5,000.
Anyone wanna speak for it? State your name, please, and your address.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Rosen. I live at 109 Mark Circle. I think this would be a great idea to repeal this limit. If I did my math correctly, a business would have to be moving tens of millions of dollars of some product in order to meet that limit. And I think anyone who has that kind of likely income would be more than capable of giving back to the community that they are operating within. So, again, I fully support keeping this, or eliminating the limit and maybe even considering raising the rate a little bit to help out the people in Garden City.
Thank you. Anyone wanna speak against it? We'll close this here. Now, we have management alcohol beverage license application. You wanna read it by heading, please?
Receive a public comment on the manager's alcoholic beverage license application made by Brandon Dmitri White to sell wine, beer, and/or malt beverages at Food Lion, number 811, at 109 Minus Avenue in Garden City, Georgia.
Anyone wanna speak for it? Anyone wanna speak against it? We'll close that here. I want to have, making a motion to approve the city council minutes from considering the November 17th, the November 7th pre-agenda section and the city council meeting in November 14th workshop. Can entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor, go by aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries. City manager's update.
Yes, thank you. We're still continuing to do several things that we've discussed a few times already. But we're in the final stages of the new app. I've also asked IT to look at some Spanish options for that city app. I think that that's an area that we need to continue to strive to do better better in as far as our Latino community is concerned, engaging them in the things that we do and promote in the city. Also, at the last department head meeting, I've asked for all the department heads to submit their goals for 2023 by mid-December. I'll be looking at those goals, and we'll be talking about how we're gonna shape policy moving forward going into 2023, and that's all I have for this evening.
Now, we have an ordinance zoning map amendment. You'll read it by heading on it, please?
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance and map of Garden City, Georgia, as amended to rezone certain property owned by Prism Hospitality LLC located at 174 Minus Avenue in Garden City, Georgia from its present zoning classification of C2A to a mixed-use zoning classification.
Mr. City Manager, you wanna speak on it?
Yes, thank you. The property is currently being developed by Prism Hospitality. The Kingston Hotel is currently under construction there. The owners have come back to the city and have an interest in developing some apartments there. There'll be a total of 67 apartments, either one- or two-bedroom apartments that are proposed to be developed adjacent to the hotel. So, they're asking that the zoning classification be changed from C2A to mixed-use.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor, go by aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, is everyone voting?
No, I think we're gonna have to...
Look, we have a show of hands on...
Show of hands, we can speak.
Okay, well, I asked...
Well, he don't wanna interject without us.
Yeah? So, everyone, everyone's in favor?
Yeah.
In favor?
There was no names.
Okay, okay. Now, can I entertain a motion to suspend the rule of council for second reading?
To make a motion to suspend rules of council to have a second reading?
Second, okay. All in favor? Go by aye. Any opposes? Motion?
You heard me?
Yeah. Motion carries. That's a zoning map amendment. Could you read it by heading on it, please?
Yes. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance and map of Garden City, Georgia, as amended to rezone certain property owned by Prism Hospitality LLC located at 174 Minus Avenue in Garden City, Georgia from its present zoning classification of C2A to a mixed-use zoning classification.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
All in favor, go by aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries. Now, we have a resolution for fire protection billing rate. Can you read it by heading only, please, sir?
A resolution to adopt the fire protection service fee rate so as to provide sufficient funds to implement and provide fire services to the surface area of the City of Garden City Fire Department.
City Manager, you wanna speak on it?
Yes, thank you. At the last meeting, obviously, we rescinded and approved a new ordinance. This resolution covers the fee schedule related to the new fire fee. I will stress that the City of Garden City has had a fire fee for a while. It's not new to us. There is a fee schedule that is presented in the resolution. The minimal charge for a residential home will be $11.67. That is dependent on the size of the home. Whereas our industrial customers will be paying a larger share. Almost 47 percent of the fire fee collected under the new billing rate schedule will be borne by our industrial and commercial customers.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor, go by aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries. We have FY 2023 fee schedule. Mr. City Manager, you wanna speak on that, please, sir?
Yes, thank you. This is a resolution to, for you to formulate, adopt the budget that has been formulated for fiscal year 2023. We've had several workshops. We've advertised abundantly. We had a workshop that was open to the public in order to gain feedback from what they were looking for for the budget, and this is the culmination of all those meetings and discussion. So, we are adopting the proposed adoption of the general fund budget and including to the other additional funds that are included. So, with no changes being scheduled from the budget that was proposed at the last workshop.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion that the budget be approved.
Second.
Well, gotta read it by heading. We're on the fee schedule. We're...
I'm in the fee schedule.
Fee schedule.
All in... No, no, we're on the fee schedule.
The fee schedule was approved, meaning this is the budget. We moved on to the budget. Okay, they wrote down the fee schedule.
Okay, yeah. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, City Manager, you wanna make a comment on it?
All right, as long as we're talking about the 2023 budget, yes.
Yes, yes.
As advertised, as discussed, and now as adopted, if you approve the budget, there have been no changes since the last workshop in the 2023 budget.
Voting on the motion, all in favor, go aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries. Resolution, railroad water pipeline crossing agreement. Can you read it by heading on it, please?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement with Central Georgia Railroad Company for the installation of a water pipeline crossing to connect with other municipal water facilities located at 2509 Dean Forest Road in an effort to increase water flow to areas within the city located to the north.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Mr. City Manager, you wanna make a comment on that, please?
Yes, thank you. By approving the resolution this evening, you're allowing me the opportunity to execute the contract with the railroad. As you all know from our discussions, dealing with the railroad is a very complex matter. However, the city will realize direct benefits from the installation of this water line under Norfolk Southern's track, as it will increase pressure and release some of the stagnant water that we have around the area of 2509 Dean Forest Road and Big Hill Road. So, I'm asking for your consideration of the resolution.
Voting on the motion, all in favor, go aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries. Now, resolution for Highway 80 property purchase and residential development bid award.
A resolution to accept a bid proposal for the purchase and residential development of property located at 2779 US Highway 80 and to authorize the city manager to commence negotiations for the drafting of a purchase and sale agreement and a development agreement, all of which shall be consistent with the terms of the accepted proposal.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Okay.
And so, there's...
Will the city manager make comments?
Yes, thank you. There are a couple of things to this resolution this evening. You'll tell by my memo that no particular developer was recommended by the city manager's office or the city staff. We evaluated each developer. There was two. There was Conner Properties and Amblering Park Terrace. Each one had a different approach to the housing request for the city-owned property on Highway 80. We scored them accordingly, and those scores were contained within the memo. I believe there may be representatives from both companies here this evening if you have additional questions. But part of the resolution is, you will see, that the award two portion is blank. And so, it'll be dependent on council to decide which bid that they would like to go to this evening, and then we would fill in the remaining portion of the resolution.
Do you have any questions with the developers? Voting on the motion, all in favor, go aye.
Wait, somebody needs to designate which developer we want to award the contract to, and we need to vote on that name. We've got two candidates. Conner Development and Amblering. So, based on the memo that was presented to you by the city manager and your review of the scoring evaluation, somebody needs to make a motion choosing, or maybe none of them, but choosing one or none of those developers to go forward and purchase and develop the property pursuant to their proposal.
Should we have a vote on each one separately?
Somebody just needs to make a motion designating one of those developers.
Mayor, make a motion that we award the contract to Conner?
Second.
Okay.
What did you say?
I made a motion that we award the bid to Conner Realty.
You wanna speak on that a little bit?
Yeah, we have a second from Councilwoman Daniels. Obviously, there are two different proposals. The proposal from Conner Realty is offering a firm price for the property and in exchange for the development of residential homes on the site. The proposal from Amblering Park Terrace, they submitted a zero-sum bid. However, they are recommending the creation of a housing authority in order to manage the property where, in essence, the city would buy the property from itself, build the property, and then manage the property in perpetuity. And so, those are your two choices. It looks like Conner has been put forth and seconded, so I guess at that point, it's now time for you to make your decision.
Voting on the, voting on the motion for Conner's, all in favor, go aye. for Connor's, all in favor, go aye.
Aye.
And the opposes? Motion carries.
Okay, so you're, we will, we will fill in the remaining resolution to represent that Connor has been awarded the contract.
Okay. Resolution, planning and zoning and building department vehicle proposal. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Mr. City Manager, you want to speak on that, please, sir?
I do want to read that. It's a resolution to accept the proposal of OC West Core to sell the City One 2022 Ford F-150 four-by-four regular cab truck at the price of $36,895 and authorize the city manager to sign a contract for a purchase order for the vehicle.
Can I get that motion again? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Now, you want to comment, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you. The current building inspector is driving a 2008 Ford Explorer that was gifted to us by the police department. Came from the CID unit. Currently, with the projects being developed throughout Garden City, they are in very challenging areas. So, the need for a truck with four-by-four has become ever-present. So, I appreciate you being willing to consider this out of the fiscal year 2022 budget. And we did check in advance with the financial department, Rhonda Farrell. And she has confirmed that we do have this funding to be able to move forward with this purchase.
Okay. Voting on the motion, all in favor, go by aye.
Aye.
And the opposes? Motion carries. Now, entertain a motion for adjournment?
We have one more item. We have the manager's alcoholic beverage license.
You have manager alcohol beverage license application. Could you read it by heading on it, please, sir?
Consideration of a manager's alcoholic beverage license application made by Brandon Dmitri White to sell wine, beer, and/or malt beverages at Food Lion Store Eight-Eleven at 109 Minus Avenue in Garden City, Georgia.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
You want to make a comment on that, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. This is an annual housekeeping matter. You'll see more of these as the end of the year comes closer and closer. The Food Lion Eight-Eleven, store number Eight-Eleven on Minus Avenue and Highway 21 is renewing their alcoholic beverage license for the year. And thus, they have named the store manager as the applicant.
Voting on the motion, all in favor, go aye.
Aye.
And the opposes? Motion carries. Now, a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
This meeting is over. It's adjourned.